All right, let's call this meeting to order. Apologize for getting started a little bit late. First up is Tim Pearson with Drug-Free Wayne County. Come on out, Tim.
I've got a handout there for you guys.
Yes. Thank you.
Add to the stack of papers.
Great, I love that. Collecting trees.
Yeah, more papers. All right, thank you so much. I'm here to just give you a report out regarding the local coordinating council, otherwise known as Drug-Free Wayne County Partnerships, grant cycle this year and kind of where we're at with everything. On your sheet, I'll help you make sense of this. If you go to the bottom section first, and you'll see there in that bottom box over on the left is the total LCC funds for 2024 is the $47,132. So it just has a quick recap. You guys know that money comes in to us once a year, or it kind of comes in a couple, twice, two payments every month, I guess, but at the end of the year, at the end of April, is when we then submit that to the state for here's how much money we've collected for the year. That becomes our budget for that upcoming year, so it kind of runs from May to May, so to speak. This year it ran a little bit later. We officially didn't get the approval on that amount till, gosh, into July, yeah, into July a little bit. But either way, the amount for the year is the $47,132. So 25% goes to administrative costs, and then 25% toward, or the other 75% is for the grant cycle, which is what that $35,349 number is. So that number is what we had available to open up to the community to take applications for grants. And as a reminder, the way that works is that $35,000 then, and some change, is split into thirds, and so we take a third of it to distribute towards law enforcement and justice applicants, and a third for prevention and education-related applicants, and a third for recovery and treatment partners. And then we just collect the applications and kind of divvy out from there. So what happened this year is that we had 16 applications that came in total, and then what we do is our board, plus a couple extra community and partnership members, join us to kind of help review the applications. Usually, REED Community Benefit helps us. They were out, they were unavailable this year, but we had Tamara Richmond as an example from United Way came in and set in on that process. And then we just go through the applications, and the review committees make their recommendations to the board. The board approves them at that point. So we had, for results here, we had 14 of the 16 that requested funding were funded. And you can see on the top table of this paper I gave you, is included there the amount that they requested, and then over there on the green to the far right is the board-approved awards. So that's where we stand at this point. And we have four law enforcement partners. You can read through those, four prevention education partners, and then six in the recovery and treatment. So we had enough applications to where we could expend all of the funds, so that puts $11,783 for each category distributed as the board has recommended there. So upon your approval, then we'll get with the auditor's office and proceed with getting those checks out. But glad to answer any questions about any of the applicants or any of the process, whatever makes you want to answer.
Are any of these 14 proposed recipients new this year?
Yes, yeah, that's a good question. We had, law enforcement was all repeat applicants. The new one in the prevention is Richmond Parks and Recreation Department. They put an application in for the first time maybe ever, but in a long time anyways. And then everybody in the treatment category is a repeat applicant as well. So really, just Richmond Parks was the only new application this year.
Look like Drug-Free Wayne County will be visiting some interesting locations again next year for the monthly meetings.
Yes, for sure.
We'll have a meeting in the park, I guess.
Yeah, we'll have to see what they want to do, but yeah, maybe we'll have to coordinate the weather and meet with them in the park. But yeah, we try to travel to each of these places for our partnership meeting each month.
I have no further questions. That's familiar in a well-vetted group of organizations.
Yes.
I would like to move that we certainly accept and approve the granting of this total of $47,132, including $35,349 in grants by the organization, to these community organizations.
I'll second that.
Brad, you're on the board of this group, I understand, so do you have any comments?
No, I just, I did abstain from this process so that I could vote on, as a commissioner, so I did not take part in any of the process of vetting any of these candidates for the grant. I thought it was best for me to abstain that, so I could vote as a commissioner, but other than that, no, I don't have anything.
We have a motion and a second to approve the funding as outlined by Drug-Free Wayne County. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Tim.
Thank you.
Please express our congratulations to all the groups that will be receiving the funding.
Will do.
Thank you for your continued work. Gina, come on out.
Thank you, good afternoon. I am here, the Community Corrections Advisory Board voted in five new members at our July 29th meeting. These members now need official appointments by the commissioners, and upon these appointments, I'm happy to report that we would have a full Community Corrections Advisory Board. So the new person replacing Kathy Williams would be Jeff Kappa. He will serve as a member of the county fiscal body. Emily Schaefer will fill the role of educational administrator. Jesse Arthur will fill the role of a layperson. Harold Young will fill the role of a layperson. And Kevin Crawford will fill our ex-offender role. So I'm seeking appointment of these new, or of these newest members by the commissioners.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve these by the recommendation of the Community Corrections Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
You sound very qualified to me.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please congratulate these folks for us and thank them for their willingness to serve. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gina. I don't see Dan, so let's go to, I don't see Kim. We're ahead of schedule. Can you ask Kim to step in and help somebody call Dan, please?
He's on his way up.
Is he? Okay, thank you.
To follow up with the topic of grants and the line, as you know, we had asked all of the grant recipients of opioid settlement money to get us financial reports by August 1. They'd only received their payments a few days before that, so it seemed a little short whack to demand a report immediately thereafter, though some of them did meet the August 1 timeline, but they had not yet had time to spend much of the award. So I had not really discussed this with you, but by middle of August, assuming David Bottard has not been putting pressure on you to get that, I have not had any report on Wayne County reports have to be turned into the state, but I'm guessing it will be mid-September like last year.
I think so.
So we can relax that August 1 deadline, even though it's in the MOU.
And they've called me, a few of them have called me and said, they panicked, I said, "Don't worry, if you've ordered something, get us the bill of sale, or get us something," and that's...
So I just think we all need to tell them, hey,
That's fine.
Mid to late August will be, September 1, I know, will be good, but that's our drop dead.
Okay.
Okay.
Bear in mind. Daniel.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
So I have two items to discuss. The first is the MOU between the Health Department and the Richmond Police Department in reference to the car safety program. I believe you guys received a copy of the email. It has been approved by the Health Board, and Investigator Ridgeway is here from the Richmond Police Department, and I'll let her come up and explain the program.
Hello, my name is Detective Ridgway. So at the beginning of the year, I was asked to attend the Child Passenger Safety Technician Course because Richmond and Wayne County has very few, if any. I met with Indiana Criminal Justice Institute and discovered that there are no law enforcement officers that are certified technicians, so I am the first in our county at this time. There have been previously, just not any active. We lost our permanent fitting site when Reed Health became a trauma center through the state. So in October, I am applying for the grant for the Richmond Police Department to become a permanent fitting site through the state of Indiana with Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. That grant will offer funding for car seats and education for families and children. However, the, I can't think of the word for this, but the catch to that is it's one car seat per fam, or per child for life. So if you have, you know, families that are on the lower end of income and car seats are not cheap, you know, you can get them one car seat, but then you can't get any more transitions as they grow.
Oh, no.
So with this funding, we are hoping to be able to provide additional resources, mainly car seats for these families. As a technician, I can get bulk car seats. We are working with other community resources throughout the city and in the county. This is not just a Richmond thing, this is for anybody within the county, which is why, you know, we reached out with the Health Department as well for funding. My funding from the grant will not kick in until after October. In September, September 15th through 21st is National Child Passenger Safety Week, and we are trying to roll out a clinic that week to really promote passenger safety, especially with our children. So that is the request for funding in this. The money from the Health Department will greatly help in providing car seats for those families. We are partnering with Firefly, the Health Department, Richmond Fire Department is also going to participate in these events as well.
I...
Yes.
Just wanted to add another resource. I am at Commissioner's appointment to the ICAP Board, Inter Local Community Action Program. It's known probably by most people in Wayne County as the source for home heating assistance, energy assistance program. It is a community action agency, and in Richmond, there are offices across from the Rose Garden and the big tall brick building.
Yes.
ICAP has a car seat program, free and not limited for just one, through the cycles, because I think as that child grows and ages up through age eight, or like 70 pounds or something, you need, what, five different sizes of car seats or something.
Yeah, they can vary. If you get the convertible car seats or the booster seats, and some children stay smaller, so then they need them for a longer period of time.
Right, it's a very large expense, but ICAP is another partner that I've urged you to contact.
Absolutely.
Because they do have those free car seats.
Okay, absolutely, I will take, I will reach out to them, thank you.
It's a lifesaver, it's amazing how many lives these seats save.
Absolutely.
Also, we spoke, and since then, I've talked to the sheriff, and he's more than willing to get somebody on his department as a technician. You know, can't do it before September, so going forward, if you could reach out to him and work out a partnership between the county and the city, that'd be great. I think we could serve more people if we had somebody, you know, more agencies being involved. Also, we might want to look at Cambridge, if, you know, did you ever check to see if...
Settles.
He definitely is, so there's another resource that we have to expand out into the counties and the small communities.
So I am meeting with Major Blanton this week, and we're going to start pushing out that event on social media and for pre-registration. It is free, but we want to pre-register individuals and families, so that way I know how many car seats I need to purchase before the event, so that way we can, you know, have some on hand to provide to those families in need as well, so.
I would encourage if you could, whether it's you or the chief, reach out to the sheriff and...
Okay, absolutely.
For that. And so we don't have a dollar amount, Dan.
Yes.
You do have a dollar amount now, because I know when you initially sent out the letter, you weren't sure how much you were going to be...
Correct, we're requesting $3,000.
And do you have that MOU ready to go?
Correct, we're ready for yours, and it's already been signed by Chief Webber.
Okay, has Ron seen that?
I sent it to everyone, I believe.
You seen it, Ron?
I only had one question, and I was just concerned if Dan is comfortable with definiteness of the obligations of the city to contribute back monies that they might get, and he said he wasn't.
Okay, so we're good with this, the city's already signed it?
Correct.
And you've got just one more copy?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we sign the MOU with the city.
All right.
And the business will be open to anybody within the county. We're going to promote it with, you know, Cambridge, Hagerstown, Centerville, Fountain City, Milton, anybody within, any family within the county is available for this, to come and participate.
So it's actually the Savannah Health Department. Ron, should I be signing this, or should somebody from...
I can't remember. So... Yeah, we definitely, when you have the conversation with the sheriff, you might want to speak about if he can work to the chief, share the city's post on the counties to get it out, Tim.
Absolutely. I met, when I spoke with Viola, that was also a plan for Cambridge to share that as well with their community.
And with that said, this program also meets the key performance indicators for Health First Indiana. So we are able to take the numbers that she provides for that event and plug it into our core service track.
Correct. So while we're supporting, our attorney thinks that this should be signed by the Health Department hierarchy rather than us, but let's, we've got a motion in a second, let's go ahead and take a vote. After we do our supporting of this project, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So I'm sure that we will support this, but we need to go through the Health Department hierarchy.
Got you.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you stepping forward and doing this.
Absolutely.
The second thing I have to get approval for is a sponsorship for Meridian Health. I don't know if you guys appreciate you received a copy of that as well.
Yes.
So last year, we were a sponsorship or a partner with a grand total of $6,000 in partnership, and this year here, they're asking for $6,400, so a $400 increase, okay?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. That would, that partnership would help us. Fit Fair, it's already happened, but we were there, and we assisted with that program. Some speakers coming to town, it gives us the opportunity to go to those and listen to the speakers. A flu program that's happening in the fall, and it helps dentistry issues with small children. So that would cover.
All right.
It was a success, wasn't it?
I believe all the programs are successful.
So has the, has the board, the Health Board approved that?
Yes, the Health Board approved it last week.
All right.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Anything else?
Nope, not for me.
All right, thank you. Kim Clauser.
Yes. We actually received this information in an email, but we now have a hard copy. So this is just a summary that came back from Kathy Dunn as a follow-up from our renewal meeting a few weeks ago. In regards, you asked Kathy for recommended plan changes for 2025, and this is what she kind of narrowed the list down for you. And the first page, of course, is going to be the life insurance, which is currently $25,000, and $25,000 AD&amp;D to increase that anywhere from $30,000 up to $50,000. And then you can see the annual increase would be $4,300 plus for $30,000, and up to $9,000 for $50,000. So that is an option, three options for you if you're going to be changing that life insurance. I really, I'm going to say it's more than five years since we, it was $15,000, or maybe a lot more, five years that it was increased to 25, so it's been a while since it's been adjusted.
I don't know, they said how long?
You don't?
Yeah.
Well, time flies, and it seems like it's more than five to me that it originally was at.
It was at 15, yeah.
Yep.
And it was at 15 for quite a while. Okay, so the cost of raising it to 30 is $4,364.80.
Yes.
And then on page two, other recommendations are listed here. But these do not have costs, they do have costs associated with them, but nothing that's not, nothing that's knowable at this time. Depends on how many people take advantage of some of those or need those, okay?
So do you want, do you go through these?
Yeah, let's go through them.
Yeah, go through each one if you don't mind.
So the first one, of course, we just discussed the increase for basic life AD&amp;D, $25,000 to $30,000. The second one would be there was a recommendation for no increase to employee contributions. The third one, no changes to your deductible or coinsurance. The fourth one was an update. Now, some of these are just going to be for the good of the plan to make the changes. Update limits of ambulance coverage, ground $10,000, air $25,000. The fifth one is update allowed amount for dialysis treatments, the new allowed amount, 250% of Medicare. And then Plan B would be allowed three office visits with, per calendar year, at 100% pediatrician, family doctor, or internal medicine. Right now, that's at two for this year. And then, of course, we have to mirror that with the mental health, that is a requirement of three visits. And then as far as on the therapies, that has increased to recommendation to 25 visits per calendar year. The cardiac rehab session would remain at 36 sessions. Your other considerations to think about would be update the working spouse rule to discontinue secondary coverage of a spouse with other employer coverage. And then B would be increase the HSA contributions for Plan B participants. That current contribution is $1,000 annually divided to $50,000 quarterly.
Thanks, Kathy.
So these are some things for you to entertain. I will let you know I have talked to Dunn, and we will, let me since I want to be correct on my dates. We're going to hopefully have a little bit of a change with our open enrollment this year, and that'll be before every single full-time employee had to elect or decline the coverage. We're not going to do that this year, it'll just be those who want to make changes. It's going to just streamline everything and make it better, so we're going to give that a shot this year. In open enrollment, we would be planning on opening that up a little bit earlier, September the 30th, and running through Friday, October the 11th is our goal, if we can get this worked out in time, that will be our open enrollment.
All right, I don't have any problem with what you've proposed on open enrollment. I think if, you know, if people aren't making any changes, there's no need at this point to put them through all the additional paperwork, or for you to go through all the additional explanations.
I agree.
I think that makes sense.
I think employees will be happier with that.
Streamline the entire process.
Just so they're fully made aware.
I'll get a lot of the emails from me, and they'll be aware.
Because there are some nice upgrades, especially in Plan B, you know.
Well, the only thing that's going to be changed, that's why I'm doing it, is only if somebody from Plan A wants to move to B, because they can't go backwards and go from B to A. So the choices are very, changes are going to be very limited.
I mean, there's three free visits and 25...
None of these have been, have been approved yet.
If we do...
These are the, these are the recommendations.
Three free visits, I'm guessing may actually save us out-of-pocket money, because you get out of, get out ahead of a serious diagnosis.
Sure, it certainly could. I guess I would suggest, I don't see anything in number one through seven that I would object to.
I don't either.
I'm ready to...
Yeah, the other two need discussion.
We need to discuss, so let's, is there a motion to approve recommendations one through seven?
So moved.
At $30,000 of a life?
$30,000, yeah.
I agree, yeah. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve recommendations from Dunn, number one through seven, at the recommended level. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So under other considerations, update the working spouse rule to discontinue secondary coverage of a spouse with other employer-based coverage, so this would impact very few people if they have, if they're not eligible for primary coverage by our insurance policy, insurance program. This would eliminate those few who choose currently to carry us as their secondary insurance. Any idea how many people that would impact?
I didn't have an opportunity to hold it down to ask them, but I'm going to say not many, because they would be paying for double cooperation, so a lot of them choose not to do that.
Yeah. I have no problem with discontinuing that option. Again, I think it'll impact very few people.
I would agree.
Mary Ann?
The question I have is that I think we're all pleased with number two, no increase to employee contributions. I don't think we've resolved for certain whether there'll be any increase to employer I don't think there need be, based upon our surplus, but I, unless there was any update to another month has gone by, any changes of any significance, so that we know.
The reserves are stable, and I don't think there's any, certainly no intention on my part to increase the employer contribution, I don't think it's necessary.
Well, it's kind of a midpoint, because you've got to fund the program 100% anyhow.
And it is.
So the issue is whether you want to take those dollars and commit them to the plan right away, or wait and, heaven forbid, if there'd be a need, then you've got your secondary financing sources, i.e. day, to get you through the rest of that year, and then figure out what you're going to do going forward. So I mean, I think it'd be somewhat ill-advised to increase it without really knowing.
Oh, I'm not thinking of increasing it, I'm thinking of decreasing it or taking a holiday.
And that is a, can be a separate issue.
Yeah, I think we look at that, I think we look at that later in the year if we're going to do that.
You might want to get through your, for your, you might want to get into your, like we did, late fall to where you've got a pretty good idea. Exactly. We did a December holiday last year.
But not an employer holiday, we took an employee holiday, but not employer.
We took both.
Oh, we did take one and employees, okay, okay. Yeah, but I just don't want to lose that on the radar screen.
Absolutely.
Given the good year that we've had. Given the good year that we've had, we could reward ourselves.
Absolutely.
So.
So you made a motion to approve letter A?
I did not, but I will.
Okay. Update the working spouse rule to discontinue secondary coverage. No motion, we have a second.
Oh, I thought we were going to discuss that more forward.
What do you want to discuss?
Letter A?
Thought we just were.
We just did.
Oh. No brain?
They, they pay, they pay regular premium, don't they, to have that secondary coverage?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, there's a.
It can't be a real good deal for them.
It is, and that's why it's not going to affect a lot of employees.
So we have a motion and a second.
That's a high risk.
To approve the updating the working spouse rule. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And that brings us to letter B, increasing the HSA contributions for Plan B participants. Current contribution is $1,000 per year paid quarterly. Boy, I understand the issues there, but I think we're only two years into the program, and I think we have a good handle on how that might impact us going forward. We've increased the benefits by having a third, third visit free of charge.
I think the $1,000 is quite generous, to be honest with you.
And, you know, the, part of the intent there is with an HSA, the premium for that plan, the Plan B, is significantly lower than the premium for Plan A. And, boy, they should, I think, they should really be looking at, can they contribute themselves to that HSA? Can view that $1,000 a year that the county pays into it as a match? So I'm, I'm not prepared at this point to look at a significant increase to that.
Did they make a, Kathy make a recommendation if we were going to increase that?
No, she was just trying to be creative with some things. So originally, we had started that to help incentivize employees to move from A to B, and I'd say it's been going for two years right now.
I'd like to wait another year on that to see next year where we're at on overall scheme of health insurance and, because we, like I said, we've been very fortunate. We don't know when next year's going to be. I'd hate to hamstring this now, and then next year is like we get a huge increase in premiums or something. So I would probably want to pass on that right now.
I respect that, but on behalf of all the Plan B people who are friends and neighbors, perhaps have something a little more modest to, again?
Well, I'm on the Plan B too, so I'll not give myself more.
But I can hear a majority wishing to wait, but perhaps incremental step-ups to encourage more and more people to move to Plan B, which I think she included this because it is kind of an employer trending step.
Perhaps, well.
And I think she's just keeping us apprised of.
Well, and the employees need to be reminded too. This is $1,000 if they'll go open the account, which some just won't do. But they also have the opportunity for an additional $500 with the wellness because those who don't have the HSA have the HRA, so they're actually eligible for $1,500 in an HSA at this point in time if they participate in wellness.
If they have an account.
If they have an account.
And this would help incentivize them to have a, I, there's good elements to it, so I just had to have an advocacy voice here for it.
Yes, you did.
And I appreciate that.
Noted. All right. Anything else on the health insurance?
That's it.
So you'll take this back to Dunn, and we'll get all the materials pulled together for the open enrollment.
Yes, and all that with some limits to sign.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Corey is not here yet, and we're moving through this stuff pretty quickly.
We made up time.
Let's go to Attorney Cross.
I think you've already authorized this, but I've got a quick claim deed to the city for the two properties that we were going, from the Commissioners' deed to sale, we were going to convey to them. You passed a resolution already authorizing it, so just a matter of having the President sign.
We did. Steve, do you, we're way into this.
So on one of those, the intent of what the end use was going to be has changed?
I didn't identify end use.
Correct, I understand that. So can, the city doesn't want that property now, one of the properties? Can we simply rescind this rather than creating a whole nother resolution?
See, they actually, because they actually took action and accepted it.
Yeah.
And then yesterday, we had a meeting with the mayor and with.
They agreed to accept it, but we haven't, we haven't conveyed it yet.
Correct.
So. Right, they signed, they've signed their resolution to accept it as we have to give it.
The board of public works signed off to accept it for a dollar.
And the reason why they don't want it is because the end use was the intent to build something on it, but they found out that it's in a flood plain. And so it has no value.
What's that do to us, though? And do we get it back, and it's our response, our baby? Well, still are. We haven't got rid of it yet.
Right, but they, they'd agreed originally to take it, so now it's like.
But, but we have the opportunity to sell it or give it to a surrounding property owner.
We can, we can find ways to dispose of it if nothing else.
And according to Sarah Mitchell at EDC, she has talked to the joint property owner, and he's willing to take it.
Willing to purchase it.
Purchase it.
And so.
I guess I'm okay with that, as long as we can get rid of it. I mean, we thought we got rid of it when the city took it, and now they're like, hey, we don't want it now, so.
I understand, and trust me, I did raise that issue, that, hey, if you've already taken it, why don't you just dispose of it?
Yeah, why don't you offer it to the neighbor?
Their, their concern was that the rules for how the city can transfer title is different from how the county can.
Not terribly, subjectively, I don't think.
Well, they.
They'd have to have it appraised.
They said that they would have to have the property appraised.
Because it's a private owner, yeah.
Exactly, to sell it.
But we'd have the same thing too, if we tried to do a twin abiding owner. So.
We have to have it appraised too?
Yeah, I think.
I thought we could just sell it for the.
Well, it depends on what the last assessed value was, I guess.
Don't you think under the, under the tax, property tax part of that where we can, where it had delinquent taxes, or you think that's been satisfied because they've been wiped off?
I think it's that year, and I, I was told we were.
I know.
Well, we were too. We were too.
I think you're, what you should do is rescind Resolution 2024-013.
Is that just for that one property?
No, it's for both of them.
It's for both of them, so then we can start over.
One's still going to go to.
Because we do want, we do want them to take 910 Sheridan Street.
Could you just rescind it insofar as it relates to North 15th?
Yes.
1011 North 15th.
1011 North 15th Street.
Okay, what's that address again?
1011 North 15th.
11 North 15th.
North 15th Street. So we can just rescind the.
You rescind the resolution to that extent, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I still have issues with the fact that now it's going to cost us money to get rid of it after they agreed to take it.
So, back to Ron, your comment, I understand what you're saying, to dispose of real property, we'd have to have it appraised, but, so you think we've gone too far after the tax, you know, property did sell, tax say we can offer to an abiding property owner for that minimum bid of $356.
I don't think that's statute.
Deed sale, deed sale.
I'm not sure again. I'll have to look, let you know what your options are.
Maybe you're not, maybe you don't want to rescind this till we find that out.
I'd like to see that for, before, I mean.
Yeah, let's do the right thing.
So we'll wait a week and.
We waited this far. We passed out June or July.
If we're in the same boat and have it appraised, then obviously it's going to be way more money than that $356.
Exactly.
But meantime, you haven't had to mow the grass at least. The abiding owner's doing that?
Yes, we haven't.
But the abiding owner has always mowed it, so, now maybe at this point he's going to stop, but.
Well, this isn't the same one, this is a different one. We had the, we pulled property thing last time.
This has been.
This is a different one.
This has been pulled several times, though.
Remember, this is the one that, a year ago, we were going to trade to.
Oh, the.
To.
The park.
Yeah, it was going to be, it was going to go to the park in exchange for some, some right-of-way around the bridges and the gorge.
Oh, for their.
So, yeah, we were going to give it to Spur, and Spur was going to give the park a different parcel.
Compensatory.
The original intent was to give it to the Gene Spicer family because that's where he lived at the time.
That was the first time.
Yeah.
Then the next time, it was to Spur, and then Spur would give it to the parks, and the parks would give us right-of-way around the bridges that needed to be worked on in the gorge. So it's, yeah, we've owned this one for a while, so one more week won't hurt either way, so.
Jason's owner would be.
This is government at its best.
Absolutely. Okay, what else have you got, Ron?
I wouldn't have anything terribly significant. I, if Corey doesn't get here, I have reviewed the contract, the consulting agreement. This is some, this is a very similar contract to what Richmond Community Schools has. It relates to a trust-based relational intervention program that is used for juvenile intervention.
This is a training program for their, for their.
I gather, it's, it's a little unclear, but it just says the client's the county, but I think he's wanting this for his probation officer.
Those people, that's what I, that's.
I mean, that'd be the only clarification, but it's probably identical to the.
And, and this is a renewal of a contract they've had for, in the past, according to, was that you, Bobby, that told me that?
I told you, yeah, that's what Corey said.
Okay.
You still want him to come?
Was he, was he planning to be here, but not until 3:15?
I mean, I'm going to text him.
Why don't we just keep moving, and he'll be here.
Take care of everything else. You don't need to worry.
And I don't have anything else.
Okay, and so.
Clyde Mobley Road, we're going to do the 21st, is that still the plan? We haven't seen the survey, but it's okay.
The new survey?
Well, the third, the survey that the owner, Mr. Gregory was going to provide.
Senator was going to provide.
Has not been provided, but we have seen some drawings that Gordon's going to try to locate the post that was shown on the drawing.
Yeah, and from the pictures I saw, I can't imagine that they're in any way infringing on the.
I couldn't tell.
I didn't, yeah, it was hard to tell, but I didn't look like it.
Didn't look like it was far.
That's why we're relying, relying on Gordon and Mike Sharp.
And Gordon was going to go out and look at it if you measure. Okay, and so, so Ron, you continue to work on contracts and documents for the, for the help program?
Well, actually, I'm working primarily on getting the template together, like I talked about this morning and before, the added contributions to the five school corporations, try to get that, because I really think it's important that they get going on that.
Absolutely.
Soon after the start of school, with creating a superstructure that internally that'll be there. I was a little clear, but I'll put together something, then you guys that know more about what your intent is can react to it, but.
Good. Thank you.
You heard my presentation to council this morning on the projects, did you have any questions on my remarks to them about what's going on with those? If not.
Were we going to talk about the painting of the head back equipment?
I was just getting ready to do that.
Okay.
Didn't have any comments.
I had some questions because you raised that to the council, and so I wanted to go there.
Getting ready to do it right now.
That's awesome.
Well, first, let's go to the Coleman Center roof.
Wherever you want to be.
So the last, last week, I sent you the invitation to bid for the Coleman Center roof and the Coleman ceiling light project.
Two separate bids, right?
Two, two separate bids. In the documents that they sent, they are suggesting that we open these bids, advertise it, and open these bids on September 4th. That's obviously council that morning, and it's pretty close to that suggested pre-bid meeting. It's only a week ahead of time.
It's due on what, to the 11th?
I think we should move that to the 11th to open those at a, at our morning session at 10:30. The only, the only question I had, and Ron, I don't know if you had a chance to read those invitations to bid, in the supplement, and maybe this language has been in there, but I've not seen it before, in the supplement instructions, they are adding a paragraph to rejection of bids. No bids will be accepted from any contractor who has failed in any respect to comply with every provision of any previous contact, contract with the owner. Such failure will be construed as evidence of irresponsibility and will render the bid irresponsible. Well, I don't think we should, although it might be appropriate sometimes.
Yeah, as I say, that's reasonable, but.
The fact that it doesn't say it doesn't mean we can't do it.
Correct.
The fact that the way it says it, says we have to do it, and I don't think you want to give up that discretion, particularly in the market we're looking at.
So, I'll let you read it, but I, I'm suggesting we take that out.
Okay, I didn't get this deep in. All I got was the 1-100 invitation.
The best one came the next day. I sent.
Oh, he did? Okay, then I may not have gotten it.
He must, maybe he thought it was a duplicate.
Yeah, I'd agree, take that out.
Okay.
One thing I learned this last week that Kevin wasn't aware of, it could impact some of our projects, is that even local public works contracts that are going to be awarded that are more than $300,000 require the contractor to be pre-qualified in the state if it's over $300,000.
So you comfortable with removing that?
And so what's the process to become pre-qualified?
You have to ask the contractor for that, but I know it's going to delay bidding on a roof job that school has because they didn't, and it was brought to their attention by another bidder. And so Kevin, and it's really been confusing because they amended the statute, legislature amended the common construction wage, I think in 2017 or 18 or 19 in that area, and now we've got a hodgepodge of statutes, Title V that pertain to the state, and Title 36 that pertain to local governmental units, and they tend to mix and match, and this is one we found that when it refers to local public works projects, it's referring to non-state projects. Most of the state statutes apply to state-owned projects, state-owned buildings, but this one does apply to any local public work, and so if the contract amount is $300,000 or more, the bidders have to be pre-qualified, you know, contractors who will bid have to be pre-qualified, and would show evidence of that in their bids as part of their bid submitted.
Pre-qualified by us?
No.
State.
State Department of Administration.
Even all highway bids and everything?
I don't, I don't, I'm not sure it applies to highway bids and bridges, I think maybe it's accepted, but our contacts with roofs, that's something normally is pretty vanilla.
Or elevators.
Or elevators. So, having that conversation, my recommendation is that we do authorize LWC to send this out for bids with that, with that, with that deletion, with that deletion in the supplemental instructions, and to receive bids on September 11th at 10:00 AM.
Okay.
And.
What's the funding? What's the funding source?
Funding source is ARPA.
ARPA.
ARPA, yeah.
Okay, I'm glad you left out that language about late bids, because that tweaks ARPA, that tweaks the feds.
Yeah.
So.
And authorize Bobby to advertise.
Let's, let's not have it end at 10 o'clock because the 11th would be our department head meeting, so.
Okay.
So we'll say 10:30.
10:30?
Yeah. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move from Steve to Cory George.
One more question. Ron, any issue to receiving, these are two separate bids, any, any problem receiving them both at 10:30, or should they be staggered?
I mean, I, I still am gonna give you the same advice, I just don't wanna tweak any auditor who sees that we said if we see one late. But during the process of bid opening, it'll be receipted in, logged with time of receipt, opened and given due consideration by the owner. That'll still be the same thing, but if you wanna space them 15 minutes apart, that's fine, too. Trouble is, the one who'll be late will be the one who's first, probably.
Okay. All right. Mr. George, welcome.
So, I am here to request you all review and hopefully approve a contract that we have with Hopalight, which is a company that we have worked with for about five years for trust-based relational intervention training, TBRI. As you all know, about five years ago, we worked with our partners at West Lincoln Schools, did a single training. We're fortunate enough to get a significant amount of money from United Way to train all schools across Wayne County in this very vital, um, training and/or education in, um... It's really a trauma-informed training that focuses on trust and relationships. The contract that's before you is for ongoing consultation with Hopalight for our department. It's a series of in-person consultation trainings with all of our staff, a series of leadership calls, and then a series of one-on-one consultation calls with an in-house practitioner that we have. Aside from almost $50, it's fully funded by a grant that we have, so, um, I have all the...
Do you have that $50?
I think I can find it in my county general budget. Yes.
I went to their website, looks like a really successful program with some proven outcomes.
Yeah, sure is, and I have copies, I don't know if you all have them, I know I gave them to Bobby.
We have seen it, and Ron has reviewed it, and...
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the contract with Hopalight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Is there any type of information sharing that the schools are doing among themselves, because I know Richmond has this, and like you say, all county schools, I do know, I think.
Um, yeah, I've been involved in some, like, superintendent meetings where it's discussed. We discuss it in a variety of our, our JDAI meetings. One of the really nice features of Hopalight is the data tracking, so pre-tense, post-tense.
Obviously, the numbers of suspensions, whatever.
Yeah, so there's some really solid data on the reduction in discipline referrals. So, you know, for us, one of the things we're trying to do in juvenile justice is intersect the offense from happening, so if we can keep, not weave, the educators can help keep kids regulated in the classroom, keep their behaviors at a level that doesn't rise. So, Amy shares that with us, of course, sort of on a overview basis, not at the individual school level, but I know that she does share that with each of the districts.
Cory, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Unrelated to this, your name badge.
Yes.
I see you have that on. Do you require all your employees to wear those during business hours?
Uh, we do, I mean, that's a fairly soft requirement, I mean, we do it for, obviously, the visual piece and just kind of the professionalism of it, but a few, a few of us forget to wear it from day to day, but yeah, we, we do.
Thank you.
Sure. Would you like me to take the signed contracts, or would you guys wanna me to send it to Amy later?
I can get them down to you.
All right. Thank you.
Excellent, Cory. Steve, go back to you.
And back to your, your project list on the, the painting of the Expo Hall HBAC. You've got a photograph in front of you, it looks like that. And part of the base contract amount included painting the unit there, it sits outside, just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page, whether you wanted the unit and the ductwork painted silver, all silver, all blue, or do you want it two-tone to match the building?
When you say silver, you mean?
It's kind of...
It's silvery gray.
It's kind of silvery gray, yeah.
Okay.
Or do you want it red?
I think, I think it makes sense to paint it like the building is, with the top part being blue.
I'm glad, I was waiting for you to see what you were gonna say, because I never know what you're thinking on stuff like that.
I like purple, but...
I would say, my recommendation, blue and white.
Yeah, well...
Or whatever that would work. You know, whatever that would work.
Just blend it in with the building, right?
Yes.
We don't wanna see...
Right.
Okay.
That'd be the classy approach.
And that's, and that's part of the base bid, but then, when we did the bid, you took an alternate, and so you have a photograph in front of you that looks like this.
You mean the very blurry one that Ron put up there?
I didn't take it. So...
Which way's up?
The brown, the brown beams are up.
Better, okay.
So, again, this had an alternate in the bid, and I'm asking you whether you want to paint that ductwork now or not. I think, remember the conversation's time was, that it would be painted, and we thought we would have the, those upper, remember those upper walls are insulated and they're not been painted yet, and of course, you got the brownish-red beams. The, the alternate was $7,516, so if you don't paint it, it would be a deduct from the original cost.
No, yeah, we, we agreed it was gonna be painted before it got up in the air. It's a lot easier to paint something at ground level than it is 20 feet in the air.
Well...
But the cost is the same.
Is this is, this is flexible ductwork, is it not? It's not like what's on the outside of the building where it's, it's rigid metal.
Correct. And that was the, that was one of the issues raised by the contractor, that, um, he didn't think he'd be satisfied with it after a couple of years, that it would flex.
Yeah, it's a shame that they didn't use darker ductwork, and I, I really, for that reason, I'm not comfortable painting it, because I think it will become, it would just, it would just become a headache, flaking off, or what it's gonna look like in three to five years.
Yeah, this isn't what I thought we agreed to. I thought we agreed to have it already painted.
Now, remember, that was a, that was an additional cost to have that wrap made the color you wanted it.
I remember we discussed it.
It was significantly more than painting it.
I would say let's leave it as is.
Oh, that's ugly.
It is ugly, but the whole, the whole inside of the building is ugly.
It's industrial.
If, you know, if we ever get to the point where we redo that insulation cover of the drywall or something, and, and actually do something with the, with the metal beams, maybe at that point, we could consider doing something with the ductwork as well. But I just think, I think we would not be happy with it over time.
Unfortunately, most of the events are there, the lights are down anyhow, you don't see it.
It's gonna be dirt.
Yeah, exactly, it'll be raining, raining paint chips in there.
Yeah, I don't think we take the option, that's my...
No, long-term, it's gonna be a maintenance nightmare.
Trying to get the paint chips off the floor.
And out of people's food.
That, that, too.
And then, you have a sheet in front of you that looks like this, it's got LWC in the upper left-hand corner. And again, referring back to the elevator conversation.
Okay.
This is a proposal to get, to give you a feasibility of updating the current elevator and/or adding a second elevator. So, on that first page, you see the scope of the work right there in the center, and, um... This feasibility study would be $6,500.
How do you prove the estimate of probable cause?
Three, bullet point three. Prove it? Provide? Yeah. I don't know, how do you prove it?
I'd like to prove probable cause on the guy who broke our elevator. I mean, was his life in jeopardy that he had to break our elevator?
Maybe he was claustrophobic, I don't know.
I mean, they, seriously, I mean, does he have some liability for...
He didn't break it, it was already broke, we just couldn't reset it because of what he did, and that has been fixed.
Does he have insurance?
I doubt it.
I mean, is he a lawyer, or a...
Well, one of the people on the thing was Debbie Berry, so she was in there with him.
She probably didn't pry the doors apart.
No, but she was probably saying, "Get me out of here."
I've just, how deep are the pockets of the guy that broke our elevator?
No, he didn't break the elevator. The elevator broke, and he probably opened the doors to get out.
Well, it was worth a shot, okay? Prove the probable cause.
So, what's the, so we did repair it, and it's functioning now?
Yes. And, and as I said in my email, we, we have a service contract, so we have priority repairs, and we also have a preventing maintenance every six months on it, plus it's inspected once a year by the state. The problem is, is the age of it, is, is parts. Couple of parts that had broken over the, at least while I've been in this position, one of them, we had to actually have it made, because it was no longer available. This particular part that they ordered, it was, it was three or four days out. It's not something, because it's not a very modern elevator, it's not something they keep on the shelves or in his truck as he goes around, so... And anytime that this elevator's down, it, it's a big inconvenience for, for the courts and clerk's office and...
But a custom toolmaker can maybe make the part, right?
We, we had one made by a toolmaker, but...
For example, on, on Monday, one of the courts had to reschedule a trial.
Jury trial.
Delay it by a day, so, because the elevator didn't...
Plus, we have a, we have a handicapped prosecutor who, whose court is on the second floor, and when the elevator's down, he's not able to, to, to go to that court.
But it's definitely a problem.
I think at the very least, we need to find out what the options are.
Yeah.
And I guess my concern, and, and maybe this is not a viable option, but it seems to me like one of the options, short of installing a second elevator, would be to have some kind of chair lift, um, that could be used in an emergency if the elevator is down and somebody has to get down from the third floor to the, to the ground floor.
That would be the case if you didn't have the second elevator.
Understood. But if, if we find that installing a second elevator costs $2 million, and installing a chair lift costs $50,000, I think we at least wanna know that it's an option and what it might cost.
Do you wanna add that to it?
I think we need to add that, I think we need to have all the options eliminated.
Add to the cost of the scope of the project.
Yeah, if we can do that, I, I think we need to look at all the options. I'm trying to read through these.
I guess going to the third floor would be more than $50,000, seeing for a chair lift.
I don't know, but it's, it's gonna be less than putting in a second elevator.
Oh, yeah.
Pretty sure of that. So, I, I think we need to look at all the options. You know, my feeling is this is one of those things that, that in the past, we've been in today's situation where, okay, it was broken, it was down for two days, but now it's fixed, and then go, ah, thank goodness it's fixed.
And I've done that several times.
You know, it's another couple of months, and, and it stops again, and, and we're faced with the same situation, so I think we have to move forward with looking at options. And, you know, this morning, council was talking to Baker Tilly about looking at a long-range financial plan. Well, if we find out what this would cost, that could be factored into a long-range financial plan, and they can figure out how they would be able to pay for those different options, which one makes the most sense.
Is that plan gonna be similar to what Unball did for us a number of years ago?
I, yes, which is Unball, Baker Tilly, it's the same.
Oh, it's all the same.
You see, people were...
Successor entity.
Merger.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Speaking of which, I, I talked to Jason somewhere before he left, and he feels pretty strongly that this long-term plan could be made even better with commissioners' participation.
Oh, absolutely.
And I, you know, I hate to see him get too far down the road without our policy and long-term vision.
We will be involved.
And I did wanna catch him, too, because as you know, I feel, as the mayor does, that we are leaving a lot of income tax on the table by not capturing local income tax from high-income individuals who work in Wayne County but live in Ohio. And even though we have the reciprocity agreement between Indiana and Ohio and state taxes, Jason felt that we had a very good point in trying to capture local income tax from Ohio residents. This would be a significant amount of income tax, I feel, that would not cause any kind of income tax increase, and those are the best taxes, I think, that don't require an increase, but just capturing that which is already ours.
Which is the state's obligation to pursue that, is it not?
No. The state already has their deal state to state with Ohio, adjoining adjacent states. It's our obligation to pursue it with workers inside our county. Other counties in Indiana do capture local taxes from out-of-state workers.
I have no objection to looking at that.
Yeah, and Jason's gonna do that for us. It's things like that that I don't think the council are looking at, I, you know, there, there are good taxes and bad taxes, and I, this is a good one. People who earn their money in Wayne County, and so many of our highest earners, don't live in this county. Maybe they, you know, will think twice about buying their dream home in Ohio. But, I know, I did this for years, when I worked in New York, I lived in Connecticut. I paid taxes in Connecticut when I wasn't working in New York. It was a complicated thing, you know, as to where did you work day by day by day. Sports figures do that, too. You know, when a Pacer plays in Texas, he pays taxes in Texas, because we don't have a reciprocity agreement with Texas, we do with surrounding states.
For the record, my wife paid Wayne County taxes and paid in Delaware for 15 years, and has done that for...
Well, thank you, thank you, thank her for...
Did she work in Wayne County?
Yeah, no, she worked in Delaware, but paid Wayne County taxes.
Oh, as a property owner?
Yeah.
Not income?
No, no, as income.
Oh, wow.
She cleared, yeah, she had to claim in what county, and that's what they took it out of, for the county.
Okay.
So, it's kind of opposite, I think, I don't know how it works, how you would capture it, but...
See, and that's, that's what...
I think it's a voluntary...
Baker Tilly to tell us.
Yeah.
And it would be some kind of arrangement with employers for, for most people, because, you know, they're deducting the, the income tax for their own employees, the payroll tax, but they're not capturing, they're capturing Ohio tax and sending that, they're supposed to be capturing Wayne County... A lower percentage of that for, for Indiana, so we will...
Yeah, and as Indiana's income tax drops like a rock, we're gonna be getting less and less state income tax, so we need to get all the LIT we can muster.
Well, but again, the, the process is, is the same, it's collected by the state, and so if there's a different avenue we need to pursue to collect that, absolutely. If we can figure out what that is, we should, we should do what we can.
Yeah, Jason's on it, and of course, I told him about our longstanding absence of collecting the food and beverage tax, which he certainly can't understand.
Certainly, sure you do.
He really can't understand why we don't collect that.
Yeah, well...
It's a befuddles him.
I'm sure it does. I think mainly it's because the city has never adopted... I'm sure it does. I think mainly it's because the city has never adopted.
Yes, once the city adopts it, they can adopt it.
It's the county, it's the county.
Well, they can adopt it.
Okay, so back to, to Mr. Higginbotham and the LWC.
So are you ready for a motion to accept this then, so we can move forward?
Yeah.
And encourage you to identify as many options as possible.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, is there such a thing, is it like a platform stairwell lift that you can clamp a wheelchair on and take it up?
I don't know.
We need to encourage those options.
Yeah, I will make a motion that we approve this with the change that look at all options, including a, some sort of chair lift for the three stories, four stories, well, three, wouldn't it?
And maybe a transporter beam.
That's what I was thinking.
Catapult?
That's it. Or just a big.
Whatever the options are.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, expand it.
And, and this can be paid out of the ARPA line that we have for, for contractual, so. We have a motion and a second to approve this at $6,500. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Then the next thing is the proposal of the contract for the Hardscape Landscape, I think. Jeff, do you have that in front of you?
Oh, yes.
AI, AI, yes.
This proposal is, again, from LWC. If you recall from previous conversations in this drawing, the estimated cost is about a little over $700,000. The proposal for actually doing the design and plans is $47,500, which, did you work out the percentage?
6.8%.
6.8% of that estimated cost. Ron, have you seen this?
No, it's probably the typical one.
Have I seen that? I don't know.
Yeah, let Ron look at it.
I just got that. I got that. It's late yesterday afternoon.
See that if you want to. That's.
That's something different.
That's the.
So we, I would suggest that we take no action today on this and have time to look at it. So we just got it.
I'm fine with that. The, the challenge, and I was about to mention this to Steve when the meeting started, but the timeline in, in this document needs to be shortened, because it, it doesn't call for awarding contracts until January. And remember, this is an ARPA project.
So we have to have it by before.
You've got to have it committed via contract before December 31st. So it's, it's not off by much. I think there's a range from like December 20th to January 30th or something. I forget the exact dates, but it absolutely has to happen, and, and that then creates a problem of waiting too much longer.
Well, I don't know what, I just, for reasons like that, I don't want to, since we just got this yesterday.
I understand.
There might be some tweaks that we need to do on it.
So let's, let's push this.
And then Ron, you know, it's not fair for Ron to sit here and look at it and have his eyes on it.
Let's push it and make sure we come back to it next week.
Yeah, absolutely. Next week's fine. I just didn't want, I'll give Ron time to review it and then us to review it.
You know, he reads really fast.
Steve, I don't, I notice there's not much scope of work in the implementation phase. I mean, I guess that's something in the nature of the design that we're talking about, that we feel our, your, our people can monitor what is going on and call in the architect if there's an issue, and then there'll be time, time building.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's basically conceptual design, schematic design, construction drawings, and help us through the bid process, and they're done. It looks to me like it's a standard AI. I think it's, I think I'm comfortable enough with it that we can work with all of you seated in the den, if you see something. But other than the timeline that you talked about, I really hadn't picked up on that.
So if, if you prefer to give it a week, we can go ahead and be talking to Kevin about making some of those changes.
I feel more comfortable myself.
Copies and get those to you guys so you can review it as well, and, and then we'll have it first thing on the agenda next, next week.
That's fine.
Yeah, I, since we last talked about this, I happened to spend a long time in the Hamilton County Judicial Center.
Uh-uh. That sounds like a story.
Five, it looks like a five diamond hotels, marble, I mean, it's just absolutely beautiful. But entering it before my mouse dropped and I was like a tourist in Paris, it's just absolutely beautiful. Anyway, in entering it, they had a very similar kind of entrance going up with relatively long throw steps that were fairly short, not steep, but I found myself really grateful for the handrail. It was a really sturdy handrail, and I'm guessing a lot of people going into courthouse judicial center or your court are probably a little wobbly, you know? It's not the best point in their lives. And this particular handrail that's in this rendering doesn't really look like one that's inviting to use. I just want to raise that up and say that I really think a handrail that accessible to steps is a pretty important attribute to it.
I agree. I agree.
It looks kind of like a chain kind of thing instead of.
What, what is, the handrail?
A functioning handrail.
Well, it'll have to be covered, right?
Yeah.
Certain width, certain height, certain thickness.
Yeah, that, that, I, I, as I was grabbing the handrail, because it was, you know, kind of a challenging stair. I was thinking, what did that rendering look like?
Well, this, this stairway would not be challenging.
I know, it's not steep, but.
It, it has to have a handrail, and we'll make sure that we have some input into what that.
I'm just unaccustomed to walking on magnificent marble.
And you won't be, on our side.
No, we don't want that.
Even when you're walking on marble, it might not be magnificent.
This building, I swore I was in a five diamond hotel.
Okay, Stephen, what else have you got?
All right. I sent you, Ron, I don't know whether this is overkill or whether this figure is necessary, but to send out an RFP for the cabling, new cabling drops that, for our computer system in our purchasing policy, it indicates that commissioners have to justify sending it out to RFP as opposed to a bid. And so I, I put some language before you, you have it up there, and I sent this to you. Is that sufficient to?
I think I responded tonight.
I guess I didn't see it. What are your thoughts then?
My thoughts into, I, I thought it looked okay. Basically, okay, basically, I thought your language was fine. The reason for it being the concerns that you have are related to the interest of the owner primarily in how the work is affected for the reasons that you allude to there. And I said, that's probably more consistent with an RFP, because as in the bidding process, typically, means and manner of execution of the work are not appropriate for the owner's intervention. That's up to the contractor. But I think here, you're asking them for assurances as to what they'll do to, and I don't remember all the issues that you identified, but they related to control of the site, and I, I didn't have a problem with that.
And especially the courthouse, just, just the way the courthouse is designed, it would be very difficult to, to specify how they should run these drops.
Well, I mean, you know, and again, I, I think you, they will provide you with a general.
Yes.
Plan, and, and they will do their own means, but I, I think an RFP is appropriate in, in this instance. Talking about, I don't know what your estimate cost is in this, but.
It's, was it $50,000? That was $500,000, wasn't it? That was $500,000?
What are you talking about?
Running the cabling.
It's 500.
That's what I said. It's $500,000.
I thought it was a bit substantial.
Yeah.
So you're saying we should adopt this language?
I was looking at the language. I clarified it.
Okay. So you've got in front of you any additional discussion? So you think, you think in order to use an RFP, we need to adopt this?
Yeah, the statute specifically says that you have to believe that the RFP process is more advantageous to us than bidding process.
Okay, I move that we adopt this statement attesting that the commissioners believe the RFP process is more advantageous in the bidding process for the courthouse campus network cabling project.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And then I'll forward that RFP language to Ron for his review. And then just as an update, recall last week or week before last, we had our United Way fundraiser, and for the luncheon, they raised $700 on the hot dogs, plus Major Mechanical donated $500 to it, making a $1,200 fundraiser for that two-hour period. So that was pretty good.
Do it every Friday during the holidays.
And then.
Is it true that $500 for the hot dogs?
I don't know. The Recorder's Office, the Recorder has a scanner that is unique to recording documents in the Recorder's Office. It is, it was purchased with the Recorder's Perpetual Fund. They have purchased a new scanner, and they would like to give this old scanner to the Union County Recorder. This, this scanner has no more value to the Recorder now, our, our Recorder's Office now. It's not something that can be used in other offices, because it's unique to that system. And typically, we would, would get.
A dollar for it.
A dollar for it at our option. So I am recommending, and based upon our experience in selling these things, that we allow the Recorder to give this to the Union County Recorder.
I move that we just learn that scanner had no value and we donate it to the Union County Recorder.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hear, none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
New York Prime eight and a half.
I don't know.
What?
I've never seen LWC's contract have interest in one over New York Prime for things, one over National Prime.
So passed out to you. This is the results of the scoring tabulation for the county's portion of the downtown revitalization grant applications. Recall that we had created a scoring matrix before the project started. The committee that scored these was myself, County Bethfields, City Bethfields, Sarah Mitchell from the EDC, and then there was one representative from each one of the health communities that helped score their projects that was in their communities. The, the rules that we set forth, the guidelines, was that our money was going to fund at least one project in each one of the health communities, and that project is highlighted in that light green in your form before you. And then the rest of our funding then was put in a competitive with all other applicants throughout the county. And so those that are highlighted in blue are the remainder of the projects. There were 55 total applications throughout the county that totaled about $14 million in projects to be done. The Wayne County projects, the ones that you were funding, is about $2.3 million in projects. And then if you look down at the very bottom, with the grants that would be awarded with this handout is the $9,000, $946,290, which leaves about $53,000 left over. We have called the next-in-line project, their project was substantially more than what that grant would fulfill. Had the next project in line be awarded, their grant would have been $78,000, but we had $53,000 left over. We asked them if they would have some interest in scaring back their project or taking lesser amounts so that you could fulfill the entire $1 million project, and they said that they would be interested in that. And that is a project in Cambridge City at 27 West Main in Cambridge City.
So the number on the far left-hand outside of the boxes, that's the score?
That was the score from the matrix.
Okay, and out, and since one of them has a 97, I'm assuming it had a 100-point scale?
Yeah, actually, that particular one, because Cambridge qualified for bonus points, they could get 120.
Oh, okay, okay.
Cambridge and Richmond could get 120.
Okay. So, so you would come back to us, or are you proposing that we go ahead and approve the the $53,000 as, as an additional Cambridge City project?
Yes.
And so what was the address again?
27 West Main.
27 West Main, at $53,000 and change.
53, 710.
And so they just, they have to match, they have to pay for 25, at least 25% of the project?
Correct.
Okay.
And so that would spend the entire allocated $1 million that the county had set aside for this program, okay? And so, now the city is doing the same thing with their allocation, so they're, that's handled, that's all handled by them.
Right.
How many of these are retailers?
They're all commercial retail properties.
All retail? No?
No, not-for-profits weren't eligible.
Or no housing, no mixed use?
Housing could be in part of it, but not a single residential house, couldn't be.
But there's some mixed use, retail, residential?
Yes, yep.
Good, so this will really make a difference in all these steps?
And that was one of the, that was one of the criteria. You got bonus points, or you got extra points if you were adding living spaces.
Yeah.
So I, I think this is great. I like the, it's spread out across the county.
Shop downstairs, apartment upstairs.
You got none in Centerville?
They were not.
They're not held.
Well, that's right, they're not eligible, or Hagerstown.
Right.
Right.
And Milton, Milton is a health community, but they didn't have a project.
They didn't submit a request. Everybody else at least submitted one. And Milton knew the rules that, that if somebody had submitted and it was eligible, that they would have been awarded.
Yeah, in fact, we had a, we had a meeting on that side of the county that they were invited to in Cambridge, I think.
Yep.
Just didn't have someone in the entrepreneurial spirit at that moment.
Well, and there's not a lot of business properties on.
Yeah.
What's the nature of the, of the projects? Most of them are exterior storefronts?
Yeah, most of them were, were windows and exterior upgrades, roofs.
Kitchen fans?
No.
Kitchen fans are expensive.
Yeah, most of them were, were external facades.
So let's say you, we award these and you go to one of them, because they still have several hoops to jump through, right? Can you explain a little bit?
Sure. So our next step, our next step.
Might somebody end up saying, you know, I really can't go through with that, and then you go to the next one on the list?
All of them were scored and, and put in a descending order.
So you got kind of a waiting list. If something, if one of these says. If one of these says, no longer want to do that?
Right.
Then you would go to the next highest score?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, you want to...
I lost my train of thought today.
What's the process?
Okay, yeah, so after your approval today, we will send out an approval letter that they've gotten this, and then within the next week or so, we'll be scheduling meetings with these recipients and to go over just exactly what you were just talking about, make sure that they're still interested in the project.
Do they have the match available?
They have the match available. They'll obviously, remember, this is a five-year payback forgivable loan, so we'll cover all that with them in a meeting, and after that, they'll be ready to rock.
Is there going to be any help to these people to find 14 contractors who are available to go to work?
That's a challenge.
That's good.
Some of them have their own that they always dealt with, and so I'm sure they've got first dibs.
Brothers of lords.
Some of them were using out-of-town contractors, but yeah, that, I think that's going to be a challenge.
It's a lot of contractors.
Based upon the, they've got a year and a half, they just have to...
Correct.
Have a contract in place by the end of this year.
By the end of the year. But I do think, Mary Ann, that with this volume of work...
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to be neat for these contractors, but anyway.
Okay, so questions? So what you're looking for from us today is to approve, kind of like we did with the drug-free Wayne County, here's our proposed grant recipients, that we would approve this list and that your committee will continue the work then.
Yes.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation from the downtown revitalization scoring committee on the million-dollar grant awards. Any further discussion?
It's a good day to be a contractor in Wayne County.
Yes. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Steve, I can't remember all what I prepared and what I have, does Beth have a template for these awards?
She does not.
Beth?
Beth.
City Beth?
No.
County Beth.
County Beth. No, because remember, we wanted to base this on what the city did with their stellar facade program a few years ago, and they can't find a copy of it. And so I think Beth, City Beth, said she had communicated with you.
I thought, I thought our Beth had.
Maybe, maybe County Beth. So we'll need to sit down and talk about what we need, how we create a template.
Because apparently AJ couldn't find his template.
I had her in the city side.
Okay, we'll make sure we get together.
So I thought, I thought maybe we should approach one of the grant recipients to see, I know, to see if they have, we'll share a copy of their grant. So we may want to pursue that rather than you recreating the...
That'd be nice, I mean, we can always adapt and scan.
Exactly, okay, we'll follow up on that. I think the Hughes's were another recipient.
And the other thing, I think we talked about was when a lot of the work was being done, I forget the name of the group in Cambridge City, any event, they recorded the covenants that were basically filed, show up untitled, on a title search of the property.
In Cambridge?
McCarty?
On those projects?
McCarty, Star...
Star projects.
Star Development.
Star Development. So anyway, we'll take a look at that. What else have you got, Steve?
That's all I have.
Okay, let me give a quick update here because we've been looking at the crosswalk here on Fifth Street for a while. Luckily, the person who is injured has made a good recovery. But we are continuing to look at options. This week, I've been talking to the mayor, the mayor has talked to his street department director, and I've been, I've been talking to Mike Sharp, who has talked to the city director as well. What we have, what we have arrived at, since the city has the responsibility but doesn't have any money dedicated to this project, would be that the crosswalk will be repainted in the same location but more boldly outlined. The crosswalk signage on Fifth Street will become two-sided, so that instead of looking at a blank sign from one side, it'll be double-sided with solar, solar lights on it.
Flashing.
Flashing lights, and this will go in the middle of the, of the street.
Did you see this?
So, so that's all been approved by the Richmond Street Department. Mike and TL, I think is his name, will, will work on how to, how to implement it, but to do it immediately will be at a cost of about $5,000. I think we can, we can take that money from the, from the signage fund that's already approved for, for ARPA, for the lighting speed limit signs, and the, and the signs for the, for the playgrounds. And I think another $5,000 can come out of that and we'll still have enough to do the, to do the speed limit signs. I'm working with the sheriff who is identifying the locations that he thinks with his transportation folks, traffic folks, think are the most immediate needs. He also is requesting that he have two to four mobile units that they can move around when, when necessary. And so we're working on fitting all of that within that $100,000 budget. I think it's doable, and so hopefully that will, that will come to pass in the next 60 days.
Have we funded any of those senior communities yet? Because I'm seeing a lot more of the visual signs, so...
They're, they're coming up, they're popping up.
Yeah, there's one on my road, works sometimes, sometimes it doesn't, I don't know if it's causing...
But I was just curious, there's more, all of a sudden Milton has a couple now, Pershing does.
There are some others, but...
They've all got ARPA money and opioid money, you know, they're all getting...
I was going to say, so if we're spending $100,000 on speed signs...
We should, well, and a few other things, so...
We're going to have them everywhere.
And it's not, not a bad idea. So we'll get the list from the sheriff of where he proposes to put them. What I'm looking for now is, is your approval that we pay for this out of that $100,000 line item, the $5,000 to take care of this, this crosswalk.
I'll make that motion, it's, I mean, our employees are crossing that road, so...
A lot.
A lot, a lot.
And they don't look both ways, obviously.
Oh.
Or they're not, not real good at dodging cars.
If they didn't play for honor when they were younger, so yes, I'll make a motion.
Steady night, Jeffrey.
You amended it to take out the employee...
Yes.
Okay, then I'll second it.
Just kidding about that. We have a motion and a second to pay for this out of, out of our sign line item. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, there'll be joy in Mudville today. Okay, the, this morning, there was a recommendation from council that we pay the additional cost of insurance out of our ARPA uncommitted funds. That number is $132,607.69.
Can you give a little more background on that? I couldn't hear very well this morning.
Oh, I'm sorry. You should, did you get a copy of this?
No.
Okay. So what, what escaped our, our budgeting this year and last year is that the insurance, the casualty insurance and the workers' comp insurance is renewed July 1 each year. Last year, we didn't account for a, an increase in that, in that cost that started last July, and so we were behind the eight ball already. And this July, there was a significant increase, as you recall, in our insurance renewal. And so we are $121,000 short in the auto and liability line for this year, for the fourth quarter of this year, and $10,773 short in the workers' comp, which is the second half of the year, so...
And that's always subject after the fact audit, safety and payroll?
So, so we need $132,607.69 in addition to the $38,755.56 that is currently still available in the 2024 budget to pay all of those premiums. And so council this morning recommended, rather than it being paid out of council contingency, that it should be paid out of ARPA. Next year, there will, there will also be, for the 25 budget, there needs to be an increase, and we will need to guesstimate what the potential increase will be for the second half of the year, which we didn't do for this year. So even though in our, in our 25 budget, we put in a significant increase, it's still not enough for the 25 budget year. So $132,607.69, 41, I'm sorry, $10,773.61 is due immediately. The other $121,000 is due in...
Three months.
For the fourth quarter, due in October. So, yes.
And we're just learning this now because there was an audit done after we went through this back...
No, because we got, we got the bill. We got the bill for the renewal.
Why, I guess I'm just curious as to why we were not aware this was coming at us.
We were not. I was not. So we did not put enough money in our budget. We did, we certainly had no way of knowing this time last year what the, what the increase would be for this year for the renewal, and so we're short.
And this gets us through?
The $131,000 gets us through this year.
Just the calendar?
This calendar year.
But we've really got to adjust our 2025 budget request...
Correct.
To get us through calendar 25.
Correct. But that will be, that will be budgeted. Again, hopefully, our estimation will be better than that.
And I didn't hear them say this this morning, but we assume this $132 that we're taking out ARPA is another mark into when we go to spend a project that they're going to, that goes into our coffer, basically.
That, wow, and I see what, that hundred, that million, $50,000 was money that we opted not to spend in currently available general fund dollars. This was never budgeted. The others, the others were budgeted items that we converted from general fund to ARPA. So I'm not sure what their thinking is.
I mean, just, I mean, it's got to be spent, I mean, we got to pay it, so...
We can suggest that.
Any idea what's remaining in council contingency?
I don't know, I don't know. You know, that's what I suggested.
I mean, I'm okay with it, I mean, because we've got to work with council, I'm sure they're going to be more than reasonable. We're trying to help them out by doing this so that we can get it paid and then we can discuss later when we have a project that we want to spend. We can nicely remind them that we did this, so...
Absolutely.
I'll make the motion that we approve using ARPA funds of the $132,007...
607.
607.
69.
69.
I'm sorry, I can't second that because the ARPA money is just being...
I second.
...whittled away, and there's going to be nothing left for animal well-being.
We're working on it. I second the motion. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Motion carries. All right, Bobby, if you can then give me the claim back, we can, we can work on paying that.
You say you're working on it?
On paying these claims.
Not animal well-being?
I'm continuing to meet with the mayor and we'll...
When are we going to talk about it so we know the commissioner's point of view?
We'll have some discussion next week.
Next week.
Bobby, what do you have?
First off, I have a hotel rate increase for the Hilton Embassy in Noblesville for $9.11 to $174 a night for four rooms from $9.23 to $9.26.
Move for approval.
Second.
Good motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Dublin Public Library appointment?
Yes, Patricia Finley has volunteered to be on the board to replace Bethany Fields, and they would requested you approve that.
I'm only laughing because I'm going to...
There's a lot of Bethfields in the world, aren't there?
Where is she from?
I don't know.
Dublin.
Dublin Beth?
Yes, this is Dublin Beth.
Move for approval, Dublin Beth appointment.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Fountain City Road closure, this is for their parade, or their...
Yes.
...Ferryly Coffin Days.
Ferryly Coffin Days. State Route 27 to Mac Study Road, September 20 to the 22nd.
So...
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the road closure. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Anything else from you, Bobby?
Yeah, we've got, the funds that were transferred today from the sheriff's department and the line items, they need signatures by the commissioners. You want me to do, we need to approve those? Yeah, they, they said it needed to be approved by you guys, too.
Okay. Do you want to bring those up so we can see that in the motion?
Do you want all of them or just that one?
There's two there.
Three are the health department, and this one's the bridge fund. The Health Department and this one's the Bridge Fund.
I'm surprised we haven't signed.
This is the transfer paperwork that the auditor's office developed just fairly recently, so it requires a.
I don't remember seeing these. We normally don't see these, but you sign them routinely?
Yes.
Okay, move for approval of request for transfer to the sheriff's department for, from county general fund.
A motion and a second. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Move for approval of request for a new fund in the sheriff's department for personal services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Here is the Bridge Fund, additional appropriate, or transfer. Isn't this an additional appropriation, Bobby?
It is.
Okay. Additional appropriation of $250,000 for the sample road bridge. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, I've got three here, so. One's request for a new fund for the Health Department. 33670, headline to 9172 Maintenance Equipment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Appropriation from the Health Department, transferring from Fund 9172, the one we just created, That's the lead grant.
Right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And I've got another one here, but I can't make heads or tails. You know what this one is? It just says finance on it and doesn't say if it's a request. It's a, has something to do with the lead grant, the same one we just created, to appropriate cash moving under incorporated cash into an account line item. Same amount we just approved, so maybe it's the transfer.
This is the transfer and that.
It's the line creation.
To create the account.
Creation of fund.
The creation of the line.
No, this is the maintenance equipment.
Oh, okay.
This one, this is the same, 9172.
Okay, 33670.
Yeah, 33670, same amount, so I'm not sure.
Maybe that's just a copy. This is the one that is signed.
So I have two. Okay, well, so with that, if you need more than.
Let's go with that. Offside, all of them. Okay. Bobby, you have something else?
And then we have the contracts for the Edit Fund.
You got it.
Yes.
That the council signed.
So this is, we'll authorize the county to contribute 50% of our edit receipts to the consolidated edit fund.
I'll make a motion and approve that.
I think we all three signed, so I'm not sure.
I think so, too. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the assignment of 50% of the county's edit funds to the consolidated fund. Any further discussion? Are there four copies here? If there are no further comments, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. No, this is just, it just says place for the sign. Bobby?
That's all I have.
Okay. I wanted to give you a quick update on one of our other projects, which has been going on for over a year now of the scanning project for the clerk's office. So I spoke to Doug Pope, who is the lead for the company of this project. Everything is moving smoothly now. We're about three quarters of the way done with the scanning. They ran into a glitch where, after the scanning was done, the information was not accessible to the clerk's office. And so we worked through that issue. And so we're getting all of that caught up. But the clerk's office is very happy with how everything works. When it is accessible, how quickly it works. They've got a new process in place to keep things moving smoothly. I told them that the contract calls for the program to be done by the end of the year. He assured me that it would be. And one of the things that we'll need to look at then is with all the empty space in the basement of the courthouse. Are there things that we can utilize that space for? One of those things, I think, that makes sense, since we've been using it now for quite some time to store documents, would be to look at moving some of the old books that belong to the treasurer's office from where they currently reside in the maintenance building and move them to the racks that are in the basement of the courthouse. It's slightly better from a conditioned space, so it'd be better for the maintenance of those books. Talk to Steve about it and see if we can come up with a plan to do that. If you have other ideas of what we might use that space for.
Do those big treasurer's books have to be maintained in physical form?
That is our understanding, yes. And I've double-checked that with the treasurer for several times, and she assures me that at this point they must be maintained in perpetuity. That will change at some point, I'm sure. But for now, they need to be maintained.
You know, I used to spend a lot of time in the basement of the courthouse when the extension office was down there. There's a lot of space in the basement of the courthouse. And yesterday's safety training that Matthew and Jonathan did a wonderful job on, and I hope you and Brad will be able to go tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
There was quite a lot of discussion about exactly where employees need to go in the event of a tornado and, of course, the gathering points for fire, et cetera. And people are really seeking guidance on where should each department decide to go. So there's, I really kind of encourage them to give some guidance. You know, department heads and elected officials are not security experts.
Correct.
Or fire response experts. But not, not most of them in the courthouse and annex. But one of the topics had to do with how the vast majority of our people do not work on the lowest floor in the event of a tornado. And we are having an increasing number of tornadoes in this region. So I've been talking to Matthew and Jonathan about examining ways that we could maybe get the majority of us who work on the top floors or second to floors into the lowest floor. And looking at the basement here, EMA is a designated tornado shelter. So citizens, taxpayers, people from the general public who are in this building in the event of a tornado warning, calling for people to take shelter. You know, we need to know where to tell people to go, and that's probably the EMA area. That's really the only designated shelter in this building. Well, what about the basement of the courthouse? Just want to throw that out because I know you'll be going tomorrow, be thinking about all the majority of the people who don't work on the lowest level of our buildings. And there's the subject of the Health Department. As you know, we're having more and more people work across the street in the Health Department. That's probably not the strongest structure among all the buildings on our campus. Should they, I don't know if there's a basement. Is there a basement?
There is not.
Should we ask the Health Department people to come over here and shelter in the kitchen of their Health Department? Or just staying inside is probably better and.
I think.
Yeah, I don't think they want to cross the road in a storm.
We want to identify the safest location.
Right. And asking Dan to do that, I think we just need to help the department heads a little bit more than we are right now by just telling them, okay, it's up to you, department heads. You come up with your plan. That's basically the guidance we've given them so far.
Well, there are designated storm shelters, rooms that have no windows that are designated as the place people should go, so.
But they're on the highest floors of our buildings. I'm not sure that's the smartest thing.
The highest floor of this building is not very high.
It's got a lot of glass.
It does have glass, and that's why you shouldn't shelter out in the hall. But.
But I can't see the weather.
The bathrooms don't have, don't have windows.
I don't know, it's just something very top of mind because it was.
I think we should have, we should review that. We should have up-to-date maps in every room in our complex that shows people, if I'm in this room and there's an alarm, this is where I should go. It's, yeah, two doors down on the left or stay where I am because this is a shelter site. So I agree with you.
There's a lot of confusion. Nobody knew. You know, we have not had a fire drill, tornado drill, any kind of a drill in 12 years that I can attest to. And a lot of people in yesterday's training are really asking.
How did that happen?
I don't know, I've been asking for it and just hasn't got any traction. I haven't been a squeaky wheel.
Okay. Bobby, anything else?
Just minutes in the bills.
Let's go to Mary Ann for the minutes.
Move for approval of minutes from our last meeting, July 24.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the July 24 minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Move for approval of claims as follows. General claims including guardian ad lus casae dated August 7. Also, Health Department claim dated August 5. Regular claims from last week, July 31. Veterans assistance claim dated July 30. Center point claim dated July 30. Jury claims dated July 29. Veterans assistant claim dated July 25. Boston Mutual payroll premium dated for July 30. State and local payroll taxes dated July 30. Retirement and federal payroll taxes dated August 9. Dunn Flex and Garnishment straws dated August 9. Do not have payroll yet, right? I give you everything that they've given me. Move for approval of all of these.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve those claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else? All right. We are adjourned.